Cop Watch policing the police every single day.
Fuck, I know, man. See, that was meant to be by God. You know what I mean? Oh, come on. So what do you think? I got to talk to Tozio on the radio about the illegal rule. Do you agree it's illegal or it's legal putting a rule in the middle of an ordinance? The rule that you can't record. Uh, no, they're saying all 100 government buildings you can't record if they see a camera, you will be trespassed. So you didn't vote on that. She stuck it in the middle of an ordinance that you did vote on and they're calling it all an ordinance and it's not. That rule is literally just a rule. You didn't even vote on it. Well, well, right. Well, again, like I said, in all government buildings, you should be able to record unless it's a private area. Okay, um, you know, the Constitution says we have the right. Um, well, like I told Tozio, that I would look into it because I, we already do got a lawyer. I finally got one. Took six years, but uh, we got-
I know somebody wanted a malpractice case. We never got one.
Okay, so we, Punta Gorda has already been filed. That's in federal court in Fort Myers, 1983 civil rights, uh, and the guy is really good. He's gonna win. Uh, and then you guys, you guys are next because this is, the documentation and emails that we got that went on with it is bad.
I do, I do have a question for you.
What's that?
But I don't want to say it out loud in public.
What's that?
So can we move over two seats for two seconds?
Uh, okay, that's true. All right, that's true.
I, I'm, the one thing bothers me-
What?
Well, a lot of things bother me.
Right.
One of the things that really bothers me, I had somebody walk into the building-
Right.
And someone's, and they got their grandchild who's seven or eight years old.
Right.
And someone told them that Charlotte County- Now, let me finish.
Aye, okay.
I understand that we have the right to do that.
That's right.
And I used the F-word in the 60s before it was the N-word. Today, it's shock value, then now it doesn't.
That's correct. That's right. No, it doesn't. You are correct.
But when the guy's got a seven, six or seven or eight year old-
Right.
You know what I'm saying?
Right.
That bothers me because it's like, there's some level of urgency.
Correct. Correct.
How do you deal with that?
Um, well, they gotta learn someday about uh, freedom, you know, freedom of speech.
A lot of people drive for that.
Uh, that's, that's- No, he-
He will let me eat my dinner.
I know, I know. He knows they won't quit talking. Do you know who this is?
No.
This is a commissioner.
Oh.
This is-
Really?
That's Stephen Arduch. How do you say it? How do you say his name?
That's the county commissioner?
Yes!
Nice to meet you.
Wow, you didn't realize.
Yeah, we didn't know, we didn't know who you were.
You didn't say your last name.
Well, you think it'll tell me?
Please.
Okay, all right.
You didn't answer my question though.
What's that? With the, with the-
About the obscenities on little kids.
Um, free, free, if we started doing this, then you know, what's next? Guns?
I, I think, I think there's gotta be some level of common decency that doesn't have to abrogate what the Constitution says.
If everybody wasn't so hypersensitive, there wouldn't be a problem. I mean-
Yeah, I agree with that. I think people are a little too sensitive.
But you're speaking of children then?
Yeah, no, children-
That's not gonna happen.
Yeah.
I had a grand, a guy come in to see me with a seven or eight year old grandchild and someone's outside, you know, I know all the words. I chose not to use them anymore. They don't do any good.
Sentence enhancers.
Trust me, for a long time.
Right.
You know, and for somebody to have a, that's New Charlotte County sign and a seven, eight year old come in to see me with their grandparent and, and I don't know who had the sign. I have no idea who had it, the article was out there.
Right.
I wouldn't have recognized you if you didn't say who you were.
Right.
I really wouldn't.
There really isn't a Bolo of me.
So, and he came up and he was like really upset. I forget what he was, I don't even remember if he was a boy or a girl. He had a seven or eight year old. He's boy, did he have to, and I said, I wasn't even aware. And I said, he said, you know, I said something. And I said, well, what did he say? He said, tell your grandchild to look the other way.
Right.
I mean, see, that's, that's why I have a-
No, I know, but if you remember your, if you remember your history though, what happened in Germany when they started doing stuff? They ended up burning books.
Yeah.
And then burning Jews.
I think there's a difference between burning a book and, you know, and, and having insanity in front of a seven or eight year old.
Well, yeah, I mean, I, Ian-
And as I say, I don't use the word. Not that I'm any better, they just don't do any good for me anymore.
Right.
I gotta come up with some new words.
Right.
Well, I got a question for you.
Yes, sir.
Okay. What do you think about that they're saying that Charlotte County is the most corrupt city in all of Florida?
Well, that was in 2012.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't know who Vegas-
Well, they did stay up.
Cop Watch policing the police every single day.
Thing, ladies and gentlemen, he's running. Hi caller, you're on the air.
Did Joe vote on that rule that they're trespassing everybody on that you can't record a public official in a public place? And did you know that Punta Gorda is getting sued in federal court for that same thing?
Yeah, that, that was not voted on by the board. That was done administratively. Um, according to our charter and our board rules, any, any of those facility rules are done by the administration. So that wasn't anything that came before the board. If that answers your question.
That makes it legal to spend $6,000 to teach all your people how to violate people's rights to record a public official in a public place?
Yeah, you know what? That gets out of my expertise in terms of legalese. I know Punta Gorda had put in place, I think there's some, some law regarding time and place for recording. Like I'm a public official. You can come into the chamber right now and record me, you know. So when we have public meetings, um, whether it's in the chamber or outside the chamber, anytime your elected officials get together, you're more than welcome to bring your recorder and record us. I think the, what's in place now is if you just walk around the facility and go into different departments and, and you're recording employees at work or constituents paying bills. And I'll give you an example. There was a recording of somebody that was in the voting line, voting, and they were recorded right up to the point where, um, they were, you could look into the area where people were voting and you can zero in and if they pulled out their driver's license to show proof of, you know, to get their ballot printed, you could videotape that. So it became a privacy issue. There were people voting at the DMV when they're pulling out their checkbooks, paying bills. You can videotape their checkbook, their name. You can look at their personal stuff when they open their wallets. So, and that stuff's getting posted online and, and the stuff that I saw, citizens were getting harassed. I mean, they're like, don't, you know, don't videotape me. And people were saying, no, I can videotape you. This is a public place. Like, well, they were in their face. So it went beyond videotaping publicly elected officials. They were videotaping constituents trying to perform their duties. And I think as, as a county, we have a responsibility to, um, you know, it's not just where you come in and, and we have public hearings, but it's administrative. People pay bills. We, we perform a function for people. So people need to come in and, and do their business and leave without being harassed. So I think that was the impetus for, uh, administration putting those rules in place.
You know, you guys have cameras everywhere, so you're recording. So how does that make it right?
Yeah, that's-
Everybody's recording every day with their eyes and their ears. So do you want me to pluck my eyes out and cut my ears off?
Yeah, those video cameras, those video cameras are for security purposes and they're not used to post online and we don't follow people around with those cameras. They're stationary cameras.
And not, and not everybody follows people around, Joe. I am not Ian McGuire. Not even close.
Well-
To violate everybody's rights because of one idiot. In fact, I'm in his trial. I'm gonna testify against him because what he did to the old lady is wrong.
Well, and I think, I think that's part of the problem though, because, you know, if, if the law allows those type of rules for the facilities to be in place and, you know, we had a problem and our taxpayers and citizens had a problem being harassed, you know, is it unreasonable? Like I said, you can come in and videotape me tomorrow. I mean, if we're at a meeting, you can come into the chamber with your video cameras and, and videotape. There's nothing prohibits you from that. It's just going into the different parts of the building and, and videotaping there. And, and you know what? This is being tested in the courts, so we will see how it plays out and if the-
Oh, yes, you are next. Dandar Dandar, civil rights attorney has agreed to take the case class action. So get ready, man. What you're doing is totally illegal.
Yeah, and-
Totally.
Yeah, and if, if a court of law says that we're doing the wrong thing, then we'll not do it.
Yeah.
That's the bottom line. So-
All right. Good luck. Good luck, bud. Thank you. Bye now.
Yeah. Thanks for the call. Yeah. I mean, hey, listen, these are the things we have to work through. That's why you have courts, right?
Yes.
In, in our republic, we have, you know, the judicial branch and they are there to decide, you know, what's constitutional and what's not and what rights are being violated. I have no problem if somebody challenges a rule. If, if we're doing something wrong and the courts say, yeah, we've overstepped, then we fix it. That's, you know, we're trying to fix a problem that was created by citizens getting harassed. I looked at some of those videos and it was pretty bad. I watched, I watched a, a mom and her kid being videotaped and posted online. She's like, don't videotape my two-year-old child. And the kid's crying. The guy's running after him with the camera and I'm like-
Really?
Yeah, at the, at mid-county library. And she's like, had to call the police and it got to a point-
She should have amazed him.
I guess here's the thing, you know, when does your right to videotape in public violate the rights of people who, who tell you, I don't want to be videotaped, then it's put up online to get hits on their website, on their YouTube channel? You know, what's her, what justifies harassment? I'm not a legal scholar. I don't know. So maybe the correct place for this is in the courts. So, you know, I, I appreciate the caller. I mean, you know, he has his rights and, and he's, if he goes through the court system, that's, that's his right, you know? And if we did something wrong, we'll find out and we'll, we'll fix it.
Mm-hmm.
You know, so that's the way it works.
Indeed.
Yeah, I mean, look, we don't, we don't have the market cornered on all the good ideas and, and on doing everything.
No, 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 no.
Well, I'm, well, listen, I'm, I'm just saying, that's, that's the way it works. So, you know, we'll, we'll see how it all pans out.
All right. Hey, do you, I guess with, this isn't, this is more of a question for Paul, but uh, when are trim notices going out? Sometime in August?
Uh, October.
October?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. All right.
Cop Watch policing the police every single day.
Banned from stepping inside City Hall, a Punta Gorda man is now suing the city after officials gave him a trespass warning for recording employees in City Hall.
It is a civil rights violation. I have the right to free speech, the right to record.
Wink News reporter Erica Jackson spoke to him about why he says this violates his constitutional rights.
Is that our right to record in here? It's not? Why?
Andrew Sheets captured this body camera footage in Punta Gorda City Hall in December. He did it despite new rules banning recordings on city properties without permission from the people being recorded.
A public official doing their public doing, duty in a public place has no expectation of privacy.
He calls the ordinance unconstitutional.
I knew it was wrong, so that's why I did it.
Months after receiving a trespass warning, the Charlotte Cop Watch reporter has sued the city of Punta Gorda. The federal lawsuit claims the ordinance violates the First Amendment, calling the code an unreasonable restriction.
It is a civil rights violation. I have the right to free speech, the right to record.
Sheets wants the city to reimburse him for the cost of the trespass warning and declare the code unconstitutional.
If I don't fight, nobody fights. We all lose our freedom.
We reached out to the city of Punta Gorda, but they won't comment on pending or current litigation. In Punta Gorda, Erica Jackson, Wink News Now.
Now, Charlotte County enacted a similar ordinance in May which prohibits anybody from recording in libraries, county offices, jails, and buses without permission from the county administrator except for during public meetings.
A brutal-
How are you? Hi, Tibet. How are you?
Good.
I thought I would wear my gear just so you could see. That's all I do.
No.
That's it.
No, you're fine.
Are you scared?
No, I'm good.
All right.
Nice to meet you.
Good to meet you.
Cool. Um, so-
I know, it's a little hot here, man.
It's very hot. Uh, of course, we'll want to go on the sidewalk just so it's public property.
Okay, correct.
Yeah, we'll just take the metro.
Why, do you want it here or in the shade in the church?
Um, no, I mean-
Okay, that's-
As long as you're okay, it'll take about five minutes.
Yep, that's, that's it. That's fine. Oh, the cops are here. We're already busted.
I think we're good. So I wanted to ask before I forget, thank you. And actually, I just got my cards today.
Very good.
Um, do you have your, um, that video from the December incident on your YouTube page?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, okay. So you want me to email it to you when I get home?
Um, I can even just search it.
Eh, you might find it, you might not.
Okay, if you can email it to me as soon as you can, because this air is at five.
Uh, yes, I should, after this, I should be home in 45 minutes.
Cool, sounds good. So you work all the way up here?
Uh, I live in Punta Gorda. We work, you know, wherever the work is. You know, we clean houses for a living and, uh-
Okay.
So, we'll drive to a point. You get what I'm saying?
Sure.
Sometimes it's too far. It's not worth it.
No, you're good.
Okay, so, so Wink News agrees that this is stupid, that they're trying to shut down free speech?
I mean, it's not even a, a good or bad type thing, but it, you know, when, when someone's First Amendment rights are being questioned, you know, that's a big deal for you.
Right.
You know, we wanna, we ask the question, is it violating the First Amendment?
So you guys, you guys did the first thing, oh, good shit! Yay! Okay, so you guys did the first thing on Dave and Susan, right?
Yes.
That's Charlotte County.
Correct.
So did they tell you what's happening? It's Punta Gorda started it.
Yes.
Charlotte County put it on steroids.
Yes.
Yes.
Uh, Charlotte County enacted theirs, I think it was back in May.
Right.
And Punta Gorda, I think it was about two years ago.
Correct.
So, um, so I knew about Punta Gorda and I knew about Ian McGuire's case.
Yep.
And then, um, when I emailed, I've been talking to Dave and Susan.
Right.
Susan's been keeping me up to date with her case.
Right.
Um, and then they mentioned your name.
Right.
But they suggested, and I agreed with them, to leave your case out of that one because it's a different jurisdiction.
Correct.
That was Punta Gorda.
Yes, yeah. My, my, uh, my case is different. The lawsuit is different from theirs. Uh, we, we got supposedly on word, we have Dandar and Dandar, a civil rights attorney in Tampa that wants to do Charlotte County's, uh, class action.
I did hear that.
And possibly Rico.
Really?
Yes.
Um, I did hear about the possibility of a class action.
Right.
Since nothing was filed and I didn't mention it.
Okay.
Um, but yeah, I mean, just keep me updated.
Okay.
If you hear anything.
Okay, we do this how? Where?
Uh, you have a pocket?
Uh, like, what, you want to go here?
Yep.
Okay.
Just clip that onto your-
Shorts?
Shorts, yep.
Okay.
And then, uh, if you want to just put this up your shirt so it comes out the top.
Right.
And so that was the camera you were wearing.
That's it. That's it. So that's why you wrote in the lawsuit-
I just want to make sure if I refer to it, that's the right one.
Yeah, that's why he said in lawsuit, it's, how unobtrusive is this? You know what I'm saying? You know, some of the guys, and they have the right to do it. They got the big honking camera, but as you see, it's not big honking. It's just- Am I your ring? Yeah, there we go. So it's nothing, it's not big honking. It's right here. My hands are free, so they can't say, I thought he had a gun.
Yeah.
I thought he had a bomb. So, yeah, it's sad. But Susan and Dave are correct. Yes, these are separate cases. Uh, I was trespassed in Punta Gorda. Uh, Ian was trespassed. You know, and I, uh, I'm sure you've heard, you know, we are, I am not like Ian, either is Susan, Ian is Dave. In my opinion, Ian was a high-paid provocateur. Seriously.
Yeah, I never met him.
Okay, yeah. He was in that case. He's in frickin' jail. He's gonna be in prison. Many felony charges. I'm one of his victims. Did you hear what he did to us?
No, no.
When he heard I was a witness, he did witness tampering third degree felony. He has five more charges coming.
Oh, wow.
Yes.
No, I just-
Okay.
Uh, hold that up for me, please.
Okay, yes. Is this a booking thing?
Yeah, this is your, uh-
Am I in jail?
I know, that's just so we can white balance the camera, actually, since you're in the shade.
Yep.
Um, great. Just want to make sure you have the right camera.
Right. Yeah, and like I said, I just, I wanted to come out with this, this is, this is the gear that I wear. That's it. I don't think it's very dangerous, do you?
We'll get a couple shots of it after.
All right.
Just stand nice and still for me, please.
All right.
You're gonna stand there and just-
Okay, yeah, where do you-
Get your spot.
Closer or what?
Stay right there.
All right.
And I'm gonna focus it on-
Do you got, do you got enough where you got the-
Yep.
Okay. Yeah, because then they can see this is-
Yeah, and I'll get some close-ups as well.
Right.
All right.
But we appreciate you guys on this, man. We're shocked that more people aren't on this.
Thanks. Yeah, we're, we're happy to do what we can.
Right.
We are rolling.
Okay.
Pretend the camera's not here. You're gonna look at me.
Okay, yep.
Can I have you say and spell your first and last name?
Uh, my name is Andrew Sheets, uh, A-N-D-R-E-W-S-H-E-E-T-S.
Okay, and, um, what's, I know you're a journalist. What group are you affiliated with?
Uh, I, we are loosely affiliated nationwide, worldwide. Uh, I'm, I'm with Cop Watch. We hold a police, sheriff, FDL, any law enforcement accountable and including government.
So as a journalist, how important, important is the First Amendment and freedom of speech to you?
Uh, if we didn't-
And the press?
Yeah, correct. If we hadn't have it, I couldn't do what I do. I've been doing this for six years. So basically, I go in with the camera, video document, uh, we're pulling records, exposing corruption, and that, that's it. I just have a body camera on. I like to document it, like to document what people say, and we expose it on Facebook and YouTube, and, uh, that's it. If we didn't have that, we are not free.
And a big part of it for you is holding people accountable?
Absolutely.
Okay, great. So tell me a little bit, I mean, I have all of the details from the lawsuit in the document.
Okay.
But tell me why you filed and why you decided to move forward with this?
Uh, the reason why we decided to move forward with this is because, as you know, it happened two years ago. I, I was one of the people that was trespassed there. And the reason why they made this, in my opinion, illegal ordinance to trespass, uh, because there's tons of case law that says it's illegal, um, is to shut us down because we are exposing it with video. Uh, so we pull records, we expose it, and we show the videos, and they don't like that. Uh, so they made that illegal ordinance and they literally said, when they trespassed me, uh, first, you know, I went to the, I went to the county, uh, City Hall to ask for a record, and then I went to the police department to complain that they're violating my rights. He said, you're trespassed. I said, when can I redress, uh, uh, appeal this? And the cops said, you cannot appeal it. Call your lawyer and slam the door.
Okay, so, um, in this case, why are you moving forward with it? Why do you think it's important to have an attorney in this case?
Uh, to have an attorney in this because it, it is a civil rights violation. I have the right to free speech, the right to record. Uh, everybody's recording every minute of the day, the minute they have their eyes and their ears open, correct? Okay, uh, so, like I said, the police officer, Justin DeVal, literally said it to my face, you can't do anything unless you sue us. I can't even go, I can't even go to appeals court. There is none. Which, by the way, is illegal. That's why he's going for the 14th amendment. You have the right to redress.
Okay, good to know. Um, and so, tell me about, you know, why you believe it is violating the First Amendment and why you're trying to do that.
Uh, do we get a hold of- Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, go right ahead.
All right, so I believe it is violating my, uh, First Amendment, the right to record. Now that I've been trespassed, I cannot go there. I cannot pull records. I cannot hold them accountable. I cannot even go to City Hall meetings to, to, you know, report on what they're talking about, passing or whatever. That is an extreme violation. So I, we got a violation where I can't even pull records. We got a violation where I can't even go to the City Hall meetings. Uh, it's, it's like, uh, the Constitution does not exist. It, it is sad. Unless we fight it, it will only get worse.
And were you aware of this ordinance, the time that you did walk in there that December with your camera on, uh, as you were recording video?
Yes, I will admit, I did know of it. I did know of it. But like I said, I knew, I knew the law and the case law. I knew it was wrong, so that's why I did it. When I went to the police station was to complain that they were violating my rights, that said I can't record. Did I expect to be trespassed? No. I was shocked.
Okay, so what are you hoping to get out of this? What do you want everyone to know about why you're appealing this?
I'm, I want everybody to know that you have the right to free speech and the right to record. A public official doing their public doing, duty in a public place has no expectation of privacy. Period. So if we don't stop this, what, what happened in Punta Gorda and has now spread to Charlotte County on steroids, it's only gonna get worse.
Okay, and, uh, just to confirm, because you did say this, they did not give you the opportunity to appeal and they're not giving you the, uh, ability to attend a public meeting?
That is correct.
Even if you give a heads up that you're looking to attend?
Interesting you mention that. As you know, with Charlotte County, you can ask to go to a public meeting. You gotta ask like two days ahead of time, okay? And then you will be, it happened to me yesterday, escorted by a guard to the meeting and they will stand next to you like you're a criminal.
So you can attend the meeting, but you have to give them the heads up and you have to be supervised?
That is in Charlotte County. Punta Gorda doesn't even have that.
Okay, so you were supervised at a Charlotte County meeting?
I just went there yesterday. I had to get a records request. I had to call two days ahead of time, set a time. I have video of it. They literally escorted me like I was a criminal to pick up a 35 cent record.
What, do you also have a trespass warning against you at Charlotte County?
I do. I do. Multiple.
Okay, so why are you, uh, suing Punta Gorda and not Charlotte?
Uh, Punta Gorda was the first one that did it, uh, I believe a year ago, almost a year ago. Uh, the latest ones was from Charlotte County with the new, you can't record thing there too, video. Uh, like I said, I did mention Dandar Dandar, uh, civil rights attorney out of Tampa, wants to do Charlotte County class action and possibly even Rico because of all the different agencies working together to stop us from recording.
Okay, what did I not ask you that you think is important? Remember, this is gonna be a minute and 30 seconds long.
Right.
But what other point do you want to make for us to include?
Uh, the one last, um, there was a federal court judge that told the FBI, why didn't you let, why didn't you record when you were interrogating these people? He literally told the FBI, uh, electronic recording is just a backup of your eyes and your ears. Period. And that's it.
All right, thank you. I'm gonna have you stay right there. I'm gonna get some shots of your, uh, your camera.
Yep. Yeah, a lot of people are digging the camera and are, they've actually asked me, you know, where to get it, how much, uh, because your hand's free. They can't, they can't see you're being obtrusive or, we thought it was a gun or-
So why that camera, not a GoPro? Because GoPros are the-
Uh, I do admit, GoPros are really nice, so, so here's what's really nice, as you can see on the camera, one button, that's it.
Got it.
Idiot-proof, a monkey can do it, I hope.
Yeah, I sometimes get confused with my GoPro, I'm not going to lie.
Well, and look, look at your camera, Jesus, how many...
Right, I know.
That's a nice camera, but that's too many buttons.
You can't learn this one overnight.
Absolutely not.
Alrighty, I'm just going to get a shot of you and I talking.
Yep.
Yeah, sorry for the confusion, we got a, a tip about a gator attack, which apparently turned out to be nothing.
Right.
So sorry if that had got...
No, that's alright. Luckily, I missed it before you wrote back again.
I know, I wrote you back within like, not even three minutes.
Right.
When I got word that it was false report.
Right.
I don't even want to say false report, but just, um, misinformation on the ground.
Correct.
So why is it so important for you to speak out, and, um, let me start over. Um, so why is it so important for you to protect your First Amendment? I don't know how to word this, I'm messing up. So why is it so important for you to pursue this lawsuit for others who may feel that their First Amendment rights are violated as well?
Because like, like I said it before, if I, if I don't fight, nobody fights, we all lose our freedom, we lose, you know, if we lose free speech, what is next? You know what I'm saying? And then are we really free?
Yeah.
So, uh, yeah, so I, I, it took, believe me, it took six years, can you believe that? Six years to find a lawyer, because they think I'm the bad guy.
What do you mean, six years from what?
Six years since I've started Cop Watch, it took me to find a lawyer to finally sue, because they, because they, everybody in town is literally scared of our court and the sheriff, literally. In fact, I got another lawyer that might sue, uh, Charlotte County Sheriff's Facebook page, for violating free speech on the Facebook page? That's also supposed to be free speech? She, she also might, might do a, uh, a civil rights, 1983 federal, because you saw that Trump just got slapped twice.
Yeah, well, and I know that there's also, I'm going to have you stand right there, face the racetrack like you were.
Okay.
So, uh...
Okay, I'm sorry.
No, okay. There was a documentary about it, about...
Wow.
The website Backstage, have you heard about that?
Yes, yes.
Did you see the documentary? Because they were like, um, soliciting, um...
It was bad, yes, it was...
But the website wasn't held responsible.
Right.
Because they're not responsible for the content on it, I know it's a separate...
Interesting.
I still think it's interesting.
Uh, well, we're, okay, do you know the difference between the, uh, the page with the sheriff?
Which one are you referring to?
Okay, so if, if the, if the police or the sheriff do a Facebook page, do, do you know and understand that it is a government-run thing that they're doing? Do you get it? It would literally like be me standing in front of the sheriff's office with a sign that says, "Fuck the sheriff." Okay, it's literally almost the same thing. So if the government touches it and runs it for disseminating information, and they're blocking people, hiding, deleting, it's a violation of free speech. So I'm trying to get a lawyer from, believe it or not, Sarasota, uh, she, she's very, very interested. Uh, Kathleen Kerwin.
Oh, hey, don't...
Okay, you haven't heard of it? I didn't either, but when I was calling around for civil rights attorneys, uh, um, I found one in Fort Myers who said he's too busy, actually, he started with Sarasota, then it went to Fort Myers, and then, uh, and then he's like, "Man, I know how corrupt Charlotte County is, I want you to kick their ass so bad, I'm totally serious." I wish I had recorded that. We have two lawyers that I've talked to that are not from Charlotte County, that know how corrupt it is, and how they need their ass kicked, big time.
Let me get the mic off.
Alright, sorry, yes.
No, you're fine, I almost forgot.
That sucks, man, I know, it's a good mic. No, I get that.
One time I forgot a mic case, that was the worst.
I know, these are not, these are not cheap, correct?
Yeah, I, I forgot like the little, uh, cloth case.
Right.
They held on to it for me. But good, yeah, just keep me posted.
Right.
On it, like I said, I've had...
If, if you want the video quicker, if you get back, I think it is not too far back, I...
I'm just going to edit here.
Okay, oh dang, alright, so if you wanted it quicker, I think it's in the video where I did a screen read on the, uh, the lawsuit.
Okay.
Because I, my voice sucks, I'm nasal, so I do a screen reader computer. So it's on that video, it's, I screen read the lawsuit, and then I think the video is after that, if you want.
That was recently?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, because I, I don't know if you've seen the page, I am a, I don't get paid, I wish I did, but I, I am...
So what's it called, Charlotte Cop Watch?
Uh, Charlotte County, uh, Cop Watch, you type that in, you'll get, you'll get the YouTube page and the Facebook, um, like I...
And we have, uh, do you just want credit to you for it, to use the video as a courtesy?
Oh, that's fine, I don't...
Like your name at the top?
I don't care.
Okay.
Cop Watch is even better.
Okay, you want Charlotte Cop Watch?
Oh, God. Yeah, Charlotte County Cop Watch, absolutely.
We give credit, you know, to whoever creates the video.
Right, yeah, that would be great, uh, because there's a lot of people that are afraid to even say Cop Watch. Because do you get what I'm seeing, everybody, everybody acts like you can't hold police accountable, do you get what I'm saying?
No, I, I completely get it, you know, I mean...
You know I'm from the place where they let a dog eat a guy for no line on his bicycle, right?
No, why?
You never heard of that one?
No, I haven't heard of that one.
Uh, that's Punta Gorda. And, and then there's another case in Northport, I'm trying to, uh, blow up, they had a cop there that had a dog, uh, that, uh, Herald Tribune did, did a whole long, uh, thing on it. This guy let his dog eat people whenever he could, even if it wasn't needed, it was disgusting. They got sued so many times, they can't even get insurance now. He just left Northport, and he went to Manatee County Sheriff.
Okay.
So I called up Manatee County Sheriff, I said, "Did you fold back, background investigation?" And he said, "Yeah, we did," and I started questioning about it. Did they? No. Not at all, not even close.
Well, keep doing what you're doing, thanks for your help.
Thank you, good to meet you.
Appreciate your time, great having you as well. Uh, 5:30 today.
Alright.
Channel 5.
Thank you.
Hey.
Well...
How are you?
Uh, cold and rainy.
It is, can I, what can I do for you?
Uh, yeah, you guys, do you, can I, uh, do a sunshine law request to, uh, to look at the, your, your, it's either law, statute, or ordinance you have for the buildings?
For the buildings, um, you can, are you recording me?
Yeah.
How about I turn it off, please?
Uh, that's why I'm here, to get a copy of the statute.
Well, I don't want to be recorded for a stuff.
That's, we're in a public building.
It'll be up a minute to the public record, and, and we do have it posted here, by the way, so...
That's funny. So why, when you, when you took the job, you didn't think that you could be recorded?
Recording me now, when I took the job, there was never a question about if you could be, because nobody did, I believe until you came in.
Uh, why, is it a bad thing?
Can I help you?
Uh, yeah, can I get a copy of this, uh, ordinance, 1872.17?
Sure, it's the same one we emailed to you before, can you pull that up and print it for him? And what records do you, would you like?
Uh, I, I just want that one again, and to see if you're still doing this, uh, illegal act, uh, by making this, this, that's not lea...
You want a copy of the ordinance, that's all you're concerned about?
Yeah, that's not, it's not legal, yes.
The ordinance number, please? What's the ordinance number?
Huh?
What's the ordinance number?
Uh, it is 1872-17, and then un-American after that. Does it state in here what happens if you do then? I mean, you get arrested, shot, trespassed?
We've provided the record that you requested, Andrew, so if you need anything else, just let us know, but we're telling you again...
Right.
You are not to record.
Yes, we're not.
So there, there's...
You don't have our permission to record us.
That's, you're a public official in a public building.
This is a staff area, it's not a public meeting area.
There is brochures, right here.
Okay, let's, instead of arguing, do you need any other records?
So, no, there's more of us, and we'll be sending more people here, because it's...
Alright, fair.
Good. Why are the cookies sitting here? Are you serious? Wow, you guys are nice.
What was that?
Do you, uh, do you know?
Oh, I got you, I got you.
Do you know, is that, is that our right, is that our right? Is that our right to record in here? It's not? Why?
Well, I don't think we got to read it, because they...
Do you guys have a copy of that or something?
I don't know.
This, is this a public area right here?
Yeah, yes, but not...
Right. Do they have it posted somewhere? Do you know?
I don't know, I don't think I hear from them.
Right. But it looks like a public area, that's, that's why we came back to check. So I can't get a copy of that?
I don't have it.
Alright.
I can try the city clerk next door.
Uh, I did, that went badly, so...
I don't have it.
So... Wow. Why, what's your, what's your opinion of it? You think that's right, that's wrong? I mean, you're, it's a public...
I don't want to be recorded, so...
Right, well, you put you're a public employee in a public place, right? Hmm. Wow. Hello? Oh, the phone, that's no fun, I like yelling through the glass. Uh, yes, is the police chief in? No. No, but I'm, I'm a reporter, and, uh, we've been having problems with getting audio and video from the cars, and, or, I'm just, I want to talk to her, to see if they fixed it. Alright. Yep.
I'm not recording.
She's not here?
Gosh, she's not available.
Alright, anyways, um, so on the, on the police recordings, on the cars, and, uh, oh, you don't got body cameras yet, I wish, alright. Alright, we, I used to have tons of problems with, when Tom was here, uh, I've gotten like, I guess, for audio and video like 78 times, including the last time here, since she's been here, with Jimenez and, uh, the Mexican guy that were pulling over the black family over here, okay? Alright, so anyways, so, uh, Jimenez Carr, he's a big, tall black guy, right?
Oh, yeah, it's, it's Jimenez.
Okay, anyways, so his stuff worked great, I go, and then I want the Mexican stuff, because he's right there.
He's not referring to him as the Mexican.
Right. Okay, what is he?
Hispanic.
Okay, it's the same thing.
No.
Why?
It's a little nicer term, but go ahead.
Okay, yeah, which country is he from?
Uh, Mexico.
That's weird. So anyways, so he...
We're going to go any further.
Right.
This is what we're going to do, the chief's not available to speak to you right now. Okay, so this is what you got, this is a trespass warning for city hall and city annex, okay? For both addresses over at city hall. You'll no longer be in or out of that property for the period of one year, or you will face arrest.
Do I have an appeal?
No.
Why not?
You don't have an appeal.
Because? Because by law, you have to.
Nope, the city clerk wishes to have you...
Okay, so that's why I'm here.
The chief is not available.
Because I felt threatened, and you, and you think that you don't have the right to record there?
You don't have the right to record, there's a city ordinance in place.
City, so what, my stuff trumps your stuff?
You can record here all you want, okay? I have no problem with you recording.
Then, then why is this different from over there?
Because that's a different facility.
And I have no appeal?
No appeal.
That's illegal?
Okay, it is what it is, you can call your attorney, you're trespassing on that property, you cannot be here for the period of one year.
You guys are sad, okay, one more thing, I did, no, I, sir, stop, sir, I did find out that you do, can look at the video and give a ticket, I have the case law on it. Do you have a card, so I can send you the case law?
That's a good thing, I, I, I'm happy for you.
Do you have a card, so I can send you the case law?
No, I'll get you one.
Send it.
I'll get you one.
Can I give you my card, so you can send it?
I don't need your card.
Very bad attitude, sir. That's why you got an IA. Fuckers. Hey, Charlotte County, this is Charlotte County Cop Watch, I am using any video here with, under fair use, if you, uh, have criticism, reporting, teaching, etc. And please donate, I do not make money from YouTube, and, uh, there are different ways to donate in the, uh, video links, thanks.